Good evening. This eighteenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Reverend Karen Mercer from the Church of the Holy Nativity. Reverend Mercer, the floor is yours.
Let us pause together in a spirit of unity and reverence. Gracious and eternal one, we gather this evening as people of many faiths, traditions, and hopes, yet with one shared purpose: to seek the common good of our beloved city of Baltimore. We give thanks for the gift of this community, its rich diversity, its resilient spirit, and the creativity of its people. We ask your blessing on those who lead this council. Grant them wisdom that listens, courage that acts justly, and compassion that seeks to serve all, especially the least heard and most vulnerable among us. As we approach Veterans Day, we pause to honor the men and women who have served our nation with courage and sacrifice. May their example remind us of the cost of freedom, the value of service, and the duty we all share to work for peace. In a time when division too often drowns out understanding, remind us that our differences are not barriers but bridges, bridges that connect neighbor to neighbor, community to community, heart to heart. May the decisions made here this evening bring peace, equity, and flourishing to every corner of our city, from our schools and streets to our homes and houses of worship. And may we each leave this gathering renewed in our shared calling to build together a Baltimore where justice, mercy, and hope abound. In the spirit of unity, we say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Mercer. Councilmember Blanchard will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Blanchard. Thank you all. The clerk will now call the roll of the members.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. Ramos. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum. Please note, Councilmember Ramos not here yet.
I had to leave.
I'll head to leave.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the October twenty-seventh regular meeting and October twenty-seventh special meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes in the desk documents folder.
Without objection, the journals will be adopted. Hearing none, the journals are adopted. Bills signed by the mayor can be found on the meeting agenda. We now move on to bills being introduced. Mr. Clerk, please read the first bill.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one six, Security Officers Compensation, for the purpose of requiring a certain type of employer to provide specified minimum compensation to a certain class of employees, defining certain terms, providing for the effective dates of this ordinance, providing for the termination of certain provisions of this ordinance, and generally relating to compensation for security officers. Lead sponsor, Jones; co-sponsors, Dorsey, Conway, Middleton, Torrance, Bullock, Blanchard, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones. Please note, please add Councilmember Gray as co-sponsor, as well as Porter as co-sponsor. Councilman Jones, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, it's three in the morning in downtown Baltimore. The air is sharp, the kind that cuts through a layer of clothing, no matter how many layers you wear. A security officer makes her rounds outside of a high-rise building, checking the gates, walking the perimeter with a small flashlight. The wind pushes against her every time she moves around the corner. Her fingers are aching, her feet is cold, but she keeps moving. She knows every inch of that building, she checks each door twice because she takes pride in the work that she does in keeping Baltimore safe. Most nights, no one sees her, most people will never know that she's the reason the building stays secure. When her shift ends at sunrise, she stops for a cup of coffee and heads home and rests for only a few hours before coming back to work again that night. She does it because she has to, because her family depends on that paycheck, because rent is due, because her child needs medicine, and because missing one shift might mean falling behind for weeks. That officer and thousands like her are the backbone of this city. They are the quiet force that keeps Baltimore safe. They're the first to respond when something goes wrong and the ones who notice the small things that prevent big things from happening. As Baltimore continues to make strides in public safety and investments return to our neighborhoods and confidence grows, we must not forget the people who make that progress possible. The ones who stand watch while the rest of the city sleeps. At a time when workers across the country are being furloughed, when wages are stagnant to keep up with inflation, and when artificial intelligence promises to reshape the world, Baltimore still has a simple duty to protect the people who protects us. And that is what this bill does. Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one six, Security Officers Compensation, sets one clear standard for pay and benefits for many women who guards Baltimore's largest commercial buildings. It ensures that fair compensation reflects the values of the service that they provide. This bill will help nearly forty-five hundred security officers in our city, many earning fifteen dollars and eighty cents an hour, while the federal benchmark for similar work is eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents plus healthcare and welfare supplements. And that difference can decide whether a family gets ahead or falls behind. When officers are paid fairly, they stay longer, they gain experience, they build trust with tenants and first responders. That stability makes everyone safer and our community stronger. This legislation is not about politics or special interest groups, it's about the people. It's about work, dignity, and fairness. It's about recognizing that our city's progress depends on people who stands up, who shows up every night, often unseen and kept us safe. We are not asking for anything extraordinary, only fairness, stability, and respect for those who give Baltimore the best they have every single day. Because when we lift the people who keep us safe up, we lift the entire city up. So I thank my colleagues who've already co-sponsored and ask my colleagues to support those who support us in the time in which they need us most. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you, Councilman Jones. For me, it's this simple. The people that do public safety should not be paid a poverty wage. We know that we know that right now Baltimore is winning the violent crime fight. We're seeing it in our homicide numbers plummeting to the ground. We know that we have many partners in that fight, and one of the partners is our security guards. The reality is that, like so many cities across the United States, we have a shortage of police officers, and oftentimes these folks are stepping in the gap. And so we need to honor the work that they do in this building and across our city by paying them a decent wage. This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee. I'm sorry, Councilmember Schleifer, please put down his co-sponsor as well. Councilman Glover, thank you. This bill has been assigned to the Labor and Workforce Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one seven, Zoning, Conditional Use, Live Entertainment, fourteen twenty-one Ridgely Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the premises for live entertainment on the property known as fourteen twenty-one Ridgely Street, block zero eight three nine, lot zero zero four, in the C four zoning district, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Porter.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one eight, Planned Unit Development Designation, Tivoli Eco Village. For the purpose of approving the application of Urban Green LLC, acting as an authorized agent for the owner of certain real property located at twenty-seven hundred to twenty-seven ninety-eight Tivoli Avenue, twenty-seven oh one to twenty-seven ninety-three Tivoli Avenue, twenty-seven hundred to twenty-seven seventy Fenwick Avenue, seventeen oh one to seventeen eleven Twenty-Eighth Street, eighteen eleven to eighteen thirteen Twenty-Eighth Street, twenty-seven hundred to twenty-seven forty Hugo Avenue, and twenty-seven oh one to twenty-seven thirty-five Hugo Avenue, to have that property designated Planned Unit Development, approving the development plan submitted by the applicant and approving a special effective date. Lead sponsor, Ramos.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one nine, Footways, Sidewalks, Accessibility. For the purpose of requiring a permit applicant to demonstrate that sidewalks adjoining a subject property comply with certain accessibility standards. Establishing sidewalk accessibility standards, obligating a real property owner to construct, maintain, and repair accessible sidewalks, amending the minimum permitted sidewalk width in the city, establishing that a real property owner shall be responsible for inspection and repair of sidewalks and curb ramps to meet accessibility standards at or before certain trigger events, establishing a new authority under which the Director of Transportation may require repair or replacement of a sidewalk, amending fines for non-compliance, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the construction and maintenance of accessible sidewalks in the city. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one two zero, Supplementary Mayoralty Capital Project Fund Capital Appropriation, Baltimore City Information Technology, thirteen million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary mayoralty capital project fund capital appropriation in the amount of thirteen million, six hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Baltimore City Information Technology, Project Number Zero Zero Two Four Two Three Nine One 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 Two Seven Dash One One Six, Broadband for Public Housing Sites. To provide funding for the memorandum of understanding between the city and the housing authority of Baltimore City to install broadband internet service at public housing sites and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one two one, Supplementary Convention Center Project Fund Capital Appropriation. Convention Center, two hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary Convention Center Capital Project Fund Capital Appropriation in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to the Convention Center, Project Number Zero Zero Two Five Five Four Nine Nine Eight Zero Zero One Five Three Four Dash Zero Zero One, Convention Center Annual Contribution. To provide funding for capital improvements at the Convention Center and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one two two, Supplementary Department of Transportation Project Fund Capital Appropriation. Department of Transportation, two million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary Department of Transportation Project Fund Capital Appropriation in the amount of two million dollars to the Department of Transportation, Project Number Zero Zero Two Nine Zero Nine, West Baltimore United. To provide funding for deconstruction and redevelopment of U.S. Forty, Highway to Nowhere, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one two three, Supplementary Department of Transportation Project Fund Capital Appropriation. Department of Transportation, fifteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary Department of Transportation Project Fund Capital Appropriation in the amount of fifteen million, five hundred thousand dollars to the Department of Transportation, Project Number Zero Zero Two Nine One Three, Hanover Street Corridor and Vietnam Veterans Memorial Bridge National Environmental Protection Act Study to advance a concept planning studies for multimodal transportation improvements to thirty percent design and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one two four, Supplementary Department of Transportation Project Fund Capital Appropriation. Department of Transportation, four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary Department of Transportation Project Fund Capital Appropriation in the amount of four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars to the Department of Transportation, Project Number Zero Zero Three Five One One, Jones Falls Gateway, to design a segment of the Jones Falls Trail and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one two five, Supplementary Department of Planning Project Fund Capital Appropriation. Department of Planning, seventeen million dollars. For the purpose of providing a supplementary Department of Planning Project Fund Capital Appropriation in the amount of seventeen million dollars to the Department of Planning, Project Number Zero Zero Three Six One Seven, Middle Branch Resiliency Initiative, MBRI, to support the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership to design and construct the Smith Cove Project, SCP, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Good reading. We will now move to resolutions of the City Council being introduced. Mr. Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-five dash zero zero three eight R, Recognizing November as National Family Caregivers Month. For the purpose of recognizing November as National Family Caregivers Month, honoring city residents who provide care to their loved ones in need, and calling on city agencies, organizations, and residents to celebrate and support the family caregivers of the city. Lead sponsor, Gray; co-sponsors, Parker, Conway, Middleton, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones, Ramos, Cohen.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, colleagues. I rise today to recognize November as Family Caregivers Month, a time when we pause to honor the quiet heroes among us. Caregiving isn't something most of us plan for, it's something that we step into out of love. It is one of the most human acts we can offer, and it comes often with sacrifice, exhaustion, and moments of isolation. This year's national theme, hashtag Caregivers Connect, reminds us that no caregiver should ever feel alone in this work. Family caregivers are the unseen backbone of our healthcare and social systems. Every day, they care for aging parents, children with disabilities, or relatives with chronic illnesses, often while facing emotional, financial, and physical challenges. Yet, they continue to give selflessly. Here in Baltimore, thousands of residents provide that type of care quietly and without pay. They help loved ones remain in their homes, stay safe, and stay connected to their community. They are the reason our seniors can age with dignity and families can stay together through difficult times. Many of us know someone, a family member, a neighbor, or even a constituent who shoulders the responsibility of caregiving each day. Their compassion reflects the best of who we are as a city. And for those who have served as caregivers themselves, we know it's more than tending to someone's needs. It's about love, patience, showing up even when it's hard to do so. I want to recognize the Baltimore City Health Department's Division of Aging and Care Services for its Family Caregiver Program, which supports families caring for older relatives, grandchildren, and loved ones with disabilities. Earlier this year, the Health Department and the Mayor's Office of Equity and Civil Rights launched a citywide caregiver campaign, an effort my chief of staff, Kim Sauer, had the privilege to help lead. The message of the campaign is clear. Caregivers are not alone, and help is available. I also want to thank community partners such as the Benty Circle and our local caregiver and respite centers for their continued advocacy and support. Their work ensures caregivers have the access to information, respite services, and peer networks. And as we observe Family Caregivers Month, let us move beyond words of recognition. Let us continue to commit to the work through policy, outreach, and community care that uplifts those who uplift others. To every caregiver across Baltimore, thank you for your heart, your strength, and the grace you bring to our city each and every day. Mr. President, I move this for immediate adoption of this resolution.
Do you wish to suspend Rules Three Dash Seven?
I wish to suspend Rules Three Dash Seven.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. The rule is suspended. Councilman, now you move the resolution.
No, she was...
Uh, Councilmember Porter. Uh, co-sponsor, gotcha.
Thank you. I move for the immediate adoption of this resolution.
The clerk will call the roll.
Parker. McCray. Dorsey. Conway. Schleifer. Middleton.
Yes, ma'am. At the end, that is the system, yes.
Um, Middleton, your vote, okay. Torrance. Gray. Bullock. Porter. Blanchard. Jones. Glover. And Ramos, excused absence. Uh, Cohen?
Yes, Madam Vice President.
I just want to thank the Councilmen of the Eighth District for recognizing this month for Caregivers Month. And just share, as a person that has experienced being an unexpected caregiver for just about two years, that's when I really saw the need of help for caregivers and just finding out about all the opportunities out here. And just wanted to give a shout out to the organization Pace, which the newest location is at Mondamin in the Seventh District, which you should go and visit because it's a lot of free opportunities that help not just older adults, but just give direction for anyone that needs help. And I think they have other locations, but there are people out here that can support you. You just have to learn how to open up and ask for that help. But again, a shout out for the people that do that hard work in taking care of people. And the person that really took care of my husband, in fact, a couple of days ago, was the year anniversary that he has been passed. And I get calls from the people that took care of him like at least once a month just to check on me. So thank you again for bringing this awareness to the public.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, Councilmember Gray. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the desk documents folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We now move to bills on second reader. Chair recognizes Councilmember Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
Without objection, we will proceed with short titles for the remainder of the meeting. We will proceed with short titles. We will start with bills from the Budget and Appropriations Committee. Mr. Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero zero nine nine, Supplementary Municipal Telephone Exchange Fund Operating Appropriation. Municipal Telephone Exchange Service One Three Three Telecommunications, one million, four hundred thousand dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
Thank you. Mr. President, the Budget and Appropriations Committee held a hearing on November the fourth of this year, 2025. It was recommended as favorable, and at this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one zero five, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Public Schools, twelve million, nine hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
The bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one zero six, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, thirty-eight million, five hundred twenty thousand, and ninety-three dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
This bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one zero seven, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Law, eighty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
The bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Let's try that again, y'all. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one zero eight, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Liquor License Board, four hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
This bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. It's a very soft chamber right now. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Thank you. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one zero nine, Supplementary Special Grant Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor's Office of Employment Development, three hundred thousand dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
The bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. As amended, the amendment was strictly technical. At this time, I move the amendment as favorable.
Before we vote, is there any debate or discussion on the committee amendment? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendment say aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the amendment is adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
At this time, I move the bill as favorable, as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one zero, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Police Department, forty-seven million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
The bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Let's try this again. All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one one, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks, five million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
The bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one two, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Sheriff's Office, three million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars.
Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
This bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill Twenty-five dash zero one one three, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, four million, four hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
Is there... Oh, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Chairman McCray.
This bill was heard on November the fourth, 2025. It was recommended as favorable. At this time, I move the bill as favorable.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving this bill say aye. Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. We now move... Thank you, Madam... We now move, thank you, Madam Chair. We now move to bills from the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Mr. Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-One-One-Three, Commercial Motor Vehicle Repair on City Streets, Prohibition.
Chair recognizes Chairman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was heard on November Sixth. It was recommended as favorable with amendments by the committee. Um, the amendments that have been distributed to the, to the members, um, or two, uh, they're very similar in function. The first one updates the fines for violation of the portion of the ordinance that deals with repairs being made in the street, uh, to amounts that are commensurate with other fines, um, rather than one hundred dollars, two hundred fifty dollars, uh, for a first offense and for subsequent offenses, rather than two hundred, it amends it to be three hundred fifty dollars. Uh, and similarly, the Second Amendment, uh, updates the fines for violation of the portion of the ordinance related to repair in footways, um, from a range of twenty-five to one hundred dollars to a range of one hundred to two hundred fifty dollars. And similarly, uh, for subsequent offenses, um, from one hundred to two hundred dollars up to two fifty to three fifty. Uh, and Councilman Parker can answer any questions if anybody has any further questions about these amendments. I move the amendment, uh, favorable, Mr. President.
Is there any debate or discussion on these committee amendments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the amendments are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Dorsey.
Great. I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there any debate or discussion on this bill? All those in favor of approving this bill say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading. Finally, we have a resolution from the Public Health and Environment Committee. Mr. Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Zero-Five-R, Informational Hearing, Availability of Naloxone in Public Buildings.
Chair recognizes Chairman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Environment Committee held a hearing on this resolution on July Sixteenth and held a voting session on November Fifth. Councilman Conway, would you like to provide any remarks before we move the resolution? Great. Then I'd like to move the resolution.
Is there any debate or discussion on this resolution? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of approving this resolution say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. This resolution is adopted. We now move to the only bill on third reader. Mr. Clerk?
City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Four-Zero, Labor and Employment Pregnancy Accommodations.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Gray for a floor amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, on your desk, uh, everyone, you'll see, um, the floor amendment on, um, I can read it on page one and line five. It strikes the penalties for violation of or required accommodations and substitute a certain penalty on that same page. Um, and basically what this amendment is, uh, it removes the criminal penalty and replaces it with a civil one, um, but it also increases the fine from five hundred to a thousand. Um, the intent for this bill is to, uh, is to promote compliance and not penalize folks. And so it falls in line with, uh, our civil rights, um, and, and labor, uh, vision. Um, it takes it out of the criminality. And so, um, that is the amendment. Uh, and I hope for your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any debate or discussion on the floor amendment? All those in favor of adopting the floor amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes and the amendment is adopted. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll for final passage of the amended bill.
Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. And now, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and Appropriations, Chairman McCray. No, no announcements. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, Chairman Bullock.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mr. President and colleagues. Um, the Committee for Education, Youth, and Older Adults will be, uh, rescheduling a hearing, um, that was previously scheduled for December Eleventh. It's now rescheduled for December Eighteenth, and that is for Bill Two-Five-Zero-One-Zero-Zero, Children and Youth Fund Updates. And that will be at twelve-thirty in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Housing and Economic Development, Chairman Torrance. No announcements. Labor and Workforce, Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so on Decem- Wednesday, December Tenth, Two Thousand, we have Wednesday, December Tenth, Two Thousand Twenty Twenty-Five, Two Thousand Twenty-Five, at five-thirty PM, uh, the Labor and Workforce Committee will be hearing Bill Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-One-One-Six, Security Office Compensation for the Purpose of Requiring a Certain Type of Employer to Provide Specific Minimum Compensation to a Certain Class of Employees, Defining Certain Terms, Providing for the Effective Dates of This Ordinance, Providing for the Termination of Certain Provisions of this Ordinance, and Generally Relating to Compensation for Security Officers.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Land Use and Transportation, Chairman Dorsey.
Sorry, I don't have anything for this committee. Other committees?
You want me to come back to you? Or no announcements?
None for this committee, only for the charter review.
Got it. Uh, t- 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 do Legislative Investigations, Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Investigations Committee will hold, uh, two hearings on November Twentieth at four-thirty PM. The first one will be EA Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Six-Four. Timothy Keen, Director of the Department of Planning, followed by EA Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Eight-Three, uh, Catalina Byrd, Member of the Board of Ethics. Um, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Public Health and the Environment, Chairman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The Public Health and Environment Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, December Seventeenth, Twenty Twenty-Five, beginning at ten AM for Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Nine-Six, Parking for Disabled Individuals and Helpers Modification for the Purpose of Removing Certain Permit Renewal Requirements for an Individual with a Disability, Allowing for a Certain Individual to Submit Notice to the Department of Transportation That a Reserved Parking Spot is No Longer Needed, Removing Certain Obsolete Language and Generally Relating to the Parking for Disabled Persons and Helpers at the Request of Councilmember Gray, Eighth District. The hearing scheduled for LO Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Two, Oversight of the Opioid Restoration Fund is being rescheduled from Wednesday, November Twelve, Twenty Twenty-Five, to January Twenty-First, Twenty Twenty-Six, beginning at ten AM. Next, the hearing for LO Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Three, Understanding Psychiatric Rehabilitation Programs, PRPs in Baltimore City, is being rescheduled from Wednesday, December Tenth to February Fourth, Twenty Twenty-Six, beginning at ten AM. And lastly, the hearing scheduled for LO Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Four, Oversight of Recovery Homes and Substance Abuse Clinics, is being rescheduled from Wednesday, January Twenty-First, Twenty Twenty-Six, to March Fourth, Twenty Twenty-Six, beginning at ten AM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public Safety, Chairman Conway. No announcements. Charter Review, Mr. Dorsey again.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Charter Review Special Committee had its first hearing last week. It was great. We reviewed a bunch of topics. Uh, I'll just take a moment here to, again, invite any member of the council, uh, or any member of the public, for that matter, who wishes to, uh, share ideas for charter amendments, to send them to, uh, to me, to Ethan, our staff member, uh, to, you know, get us, get it into our hands, because we're considering a wide range of topics and we want to get it all on the table. And, um, it just really taken a lot, a wide range of things into consideration. Um, and as we start to have more in-depth conversations. At our first meeting, we discussed, I don't know, maybe twenty different topics that had come up in preliminary conversations. Um, and at our next meetings, we're gonna start to dive into a little bit more detail of consideration of those and suss out, you know, feasibility issues, um, related to them. Uh, and so my announcement tonight is just for a change of venue for the next three meetings of the committee. Um, we're gonna, I had already announced hearings for November Nineteenth, December Third, and January Twenty-First, uh, as taking place in this room. But we're gonna move them across the hall so we can sit at a different kind of table arrangement, have a little more intimate conversation among committee members, uh, to just kinda get a lot of back and forth going on about these things. So those meetings on November Nineteenth, December Third, and January Twenty-First will be across the hall in the current room.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Uh, finally, I have two announcements. The committee of the whole will meet on Thursday, January Fifteenth, at five-thirty in the council chambers. We were, we will hear LO Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Six, Legislative Oversight Crisis Response. This is a follow-up on the hearing on the same matter that was held on August Twenty-Seven. The Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold its next meeting on Tuesday, December Second, at five-thirty PM in the council chambers. As a reminder, the Biennial Audits Oversight Commission, or B A O C, is tasked with providing guidance to the city auditor on the scope of performance audits. One last thing. I want to state for the record that City Council Bill Twenty-Five-Dash-Zero-One-One-Five, Window Display Luminance, was assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee. It was printed properly in the agenda at the October Twenty-Seven meeting, but announced incorrectly. We now move to regular announcements. Um, of course, I'd like to begin by remembering Deputy Mayor Anthony Barstail, who we lost last week at the age of fifty-three. And, uh, before inviting other members to reflect on Mr. Barstail, I'll just say this. Um, we all knew him well in this chamber. He was a stoic, quiet leader. He never asked for credit. He was always behind the scenes, but he was extremely effective. Anytime you trace the downward trend in homicides in our city in the last couple decades, Tony Barstail was there for it. Uh, I'll just say on a personal note, I remember when I had an issue with safety in my district a couple of years ago, I called him up and told him about it. He didn't get defensive. He didn't deflect. He asked to come visit with me. And we went down and we walked together. He saw what he saw and he said, "Councilman, you're right." And he changed up his strategy as a result. He was extremely responsive. He was extremely thoughtful. And he cared deeply about people. That's why he did the work. It was about protecting lives and keeping Baltimoreans alive. Um, I will deeply, deeply, deeply miss him. Uh, it is a huge loss for our city. So I'll ask for a moment of silence for, uh, Deputy Mayor Barstail and if anyone else has some words, uh, Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I had an opportunity to get to know, uh, Anthony Barstail a long time ago when I worked in the mayor's office. Um, at the time, I was in city stat and, um, I'd just taken on the police portfolio and I had no idea what I was doing. Funny to imagine that, guys. Um, and, uh, the city stat director at the time, um, knew, uh, Tony Barstail really, really well. And so we sat down over, um, coffee and he just flooded ideas on me. And I will tell you, that man was brilliant. Um, he really understood the city well.
Yep.
He really understood the department well. And, uh, it's a huge, huge, huge loss for us. Um, you know, when, uh, Mayor Scott brought him back, it's one of the best decisions I think the mayor's ever made. Um, he just, he, he got it. He really got it. And, um, you know, I think he, he never stopped believing in Baltimore. He never stopped working for the city of Baltimore, even when he didn't work for the city of Baltimore. And we were all incredibly, incredibly blessed, whether or not you worked with him or not, um, to have him on our team. And so, um, you know, when I found out we lost him last week, it was really, really tough. And I think, um, you know, he touched a lot of us and, 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 um, really changed the direction for our city. And, you know, proud of the, the work that he's done, proud of my opportunity to learn from him and get a sense for how he thought through problems. Because to this day, the way that I sort of run this committee and ask the questions that I ask, uh, it really kinda comes from him. Um, you know, the whole city stat model, it comes from CompStat, which is, uh, you know, the program that, you know, we adopted from New York and he implemented in, in the police department. And it's the way that I approach everything that I do today, looking at data and, um, using data to make decisions. And, uh, it's a huge loss for us. Um, my, my heart goes out to his family, uh, and all the people that were close to him. Um, you know, I'll make sure that, um, I can continue to keep his family in my prayers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Who else? Uh, Councilmember McCray.
A lot of people have attempted to take credit for the downward trend in our crime rates. And I wanted to make sure that people understand that Deputy Mayor Barstail and his team, they are the reason why our crime is down. They are the reason. He is the reason why our crime is down. Um, he is from Baltimore. And he decided to serve Baltimore during his career. We are very, very grateful. We are appreciative. And this is a huge loss for our city. My prayers, um, they are with his family, but I wanted to make sure that we know that Deputy Mayor Barstail, while others have attempted to take the credit time and time again, he's the reason for the downward trend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other regular announcements? Uh, there is a serious fire in Hamden, um, at Thirty-Fourth and Keswick. Um, appreciate. Folks know that sometimes as a councilperson, you get called to go out and be with your district, and this is one such time. So our hopes, thoughts, and prayers are, uh, with the people of Hamden in this moment. Um, any other regular announcements? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, colleagues, speaking of, you know, maybe fitting after having spoken about Deputy Mayor Barstail and with our firefighters, tomorrow is Veterans Day in the city. Um, we have over twenty thousand living veterans, uh, in Baltimore City. Um, we recently just started up, uh, the Baltimore Veterans Commission. Um, very, very excited about that opportunity. Um, and I would encourage, encourage just all my colleagues on the council, um, you know, to think about, the way I like to think about it is the two sides of, there's the things that we can do to serve those who have served, to think of making sure that they have, um, what they need when it comes to, uh, support from a VA situation or from a housing situation, all these types of things. There's also, um, maybe the less common way to think about it is giving, um, you know, all veterans, a couple of things you have in common. Um, you know, you are a, you like being on a team, you like a challenge, uh, and you have a sense of service to something bigger than yourself. So I always encourage, um, everyone that, that think about tapping into that finding ways to help service members and veterans continue to serve after service. A phenomenal example of that, uh, a lot of robust work in the Johnson Square area, is the Sixth Branch, um, which does, you know, heavy veteran-led efforts to, to beautify vacant lots, plant trees, do all sorts of great stuff. Um, they recently came over to downtown to help out over the weekend. So, um, just something to, to flag for everyone, and now that we do have the Veterans Commission back up and running, um, any ideas or, or questions that, that you have for the commission? Um, Jill Muth is, um, from O E C R is a phenomenal lead there. She dual hails with that and the Women's Commission. I would love to hear y'all's ideas if you have them as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Other regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, I will ask for a moment of silence for Anthony Barstail. Thank you. Thank you. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, November twenty-fourth at five PM, there being no further business. This concludes the eighteenth regular meeting of the seventy-fourth term of the Baltimore City Council.